Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education regularly scheduled business meeting for tonight, Monday, October the 14th, 2013. I'd like to, at this time, call the meeting to order. And our first item on the agenda tonight is we'd like to observe a moment of silence for two students that we've recently lost, and actually, we've had three in the last month that we've lost in Cabarrus County Schools, and we did a moment of silence in our previous meeting for one of those. But tonight, I'd like to ask you if you will all bow for a minute, and let's remember Ms. Kayla Smith and Mr. Mark Bostick, if you will, please. All right, now, for our opening ceremony tonight, we have the presentation of colors that will be presented to us tonight from the Mount Pleasant Junior ROTC. And we have, as part of that group, Cadet Lieutenant, Second Lieutenant Joseph Mays, he's the color guard commander. We have Captain Hunter Moore. We have Cadet Captain Emily Shepherd, Cadet Second Lieutenant Robert Emerson, and Ms. Elena Cooper, she's a choral student at Mount Pleasant High School, and she's going to perform the Star Spangled Banner for us tonight. And the ones that help on that are cadets who are being led by Lieutenant Colonel Malcolm Snell from the U.S. Air Force, retired, and he happens to not be with us tonight, I don't think. And then we have Chief Master Sergeant Kevin McLaughlin, U.S. Air Force, retired. So if you'll all join me, we'll stand for the presentation of colors.
(intense orchestral music) (intense orchestral music)
(singing) Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night That our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Order, arm, post. Right, aim, oh, order.
Once again, I appreciate all of you being here. It's always a special part of our meeting when we have the junior ROTCs. I failed to mention that Ms. Elena Cooper's instructor, her teacher, is Ms. Jennifer Smith. And I don't know, does she happen to be here tonight? I'm just wondering. Thank you, Jennifer, you've done a real good job of Elena.[337.81][337.81](applause) They all did a fine job. Okay, our first thing we need to move to is the setting of the agenda. Board members, you know, we've discussed it, we've had it, and so do I have a motion that the agenda be approved as presented?
They're moved.
Second.
Mr. Kiger makes the motion, Ms. Carpenter seconds it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is approved as presented, and so we'll move on into the agenda. And the recognitions part is where Ms. Ronnie Boone will come to the podium. And while she's on her way, and she'll say this already, I'm sure, but we appreciate Concord Printing being one of our key sponsors for the Impact Through Education Awards. This is the second year they've done this, and so we appreciate them so much, but I know she's going to say something else about it, too. But thank you, Ms. Boone, for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. You did a fine job on thanking Concord Printing for being our sponsor, so we just want to say thank you again to them for sponsoring these awards for us. Tonight, for our Impact Through Education Awards, we will recognize students and staff members at Bethel Elementary School and also at Hickory Ridge High School. We're going to begin with Bethel Elementary School, and I would like to invite any members of Bethel's administrative team to please come forward at this time. Our first honoree from Bethel is TJ Hagler. Would TJ and his family please come forward? Family, you can come on the side of TJ, too. The Bethel virtues are be respectful, be responsible, be trustworthy, and show self-control. TJ not only exhibits these traits, he is the absolute essence of the virtues. TJ is a student who truly enjoys learning and learns with a smile. He never backs down from a challenge and always gives his best. He works well with his classmates and shares his great ideas in discussions and group work. TJ is a quiet young man, though Mr. Blackburn, his principal, thinks that's because he has such a hard time getting in a word with his family's outgoingness.[519.29][519.29](laughter) TJ is always respectful of others, other students and staff, and the other adults in the school, showing kindness to all. He perseveres through everything that requires his attention, and TJ is quick to offer help to others in need. TJ has a heart of gold. As a member of the school's safety patrol, he uses his post to teach other students the Bethel virtues and to make sure all are safe. Bethel Elementary School is proud and honored to award the Impact Through Education Award to TJ Hagler. Would Bryant and his family please come forward? Bryant McDaniel is an exemplary student who also is the embodiment of the Bethel virtues. He is incredibly mature for his age, and his work ethic is hard to beat. Not only does he soar academically, but he is also a wonderful person that is always willing to help around the classroom. He is respectful to everyone and everything around him, and it is obvious that he holds himself to high standards. He is self-motivated and completes any task he is given with great attention to detail and accuracy. He is the type of student who not only checks his work, but checks it twice. The moment Bryant is given a task, he gets right to work and doesn't break until he's finished, and he rarely needs directions repeated as he is always listening intently. He is such a fantastic fifth grader and is a great reminder to us all about what self-discipline, respect, hard work, and integrity really look like. Bethel Elementary School is proud and honored to award the Impact Through Education Award to Bryant McDaniel. Next, we will honor Ms. Melissa Logan. Would Ms. Logan and her family please come forward? Melissa Logan is a kindergarten teacher at Bethel Elementary. She is described as tender-hearted, loving, caring, and supportive. She is cheerful and always seems to have a smile on her face. Instead of providing you with a regular biography about Mrs. Logan, the Bethel staff asked her students to share what makes her so special.[785.88][785.88](laughter) So just listen to a few of the things that they had to say about Ms. Logan. Mrs. Logan is teaching us to read and color. I think she dresses really beautiful.[800.25][800.25](laughter) I think Mrs. Logan is very nice and sweet. I like the way Mrs. Logan smiles. I like how she reads books to us. Mrs. Logan lets us go outside.[812.23][812.23](laughter) I like her because she is funny. I like it when Mrs. Logan smiles. I love her so much, and I like it when she gives us centers to work on. I like Mrs. Logan because she gives us apple snacks when we are done with all of our work.[828.73][828.73](laughter) I love her. And finally, I never want to leave her classroom because I really like it. Enough said. Our final honoree from Bethel Elementary School is Ms. Maria Aravelo. Maria is an amazing person who is always willing to help, always willing to go the extra mile, always has a positive attitude, always greets you with a smile, always there when you need her, and has a heart that is so big that it fills the entire school. Ms. Maria, as she is affectionately called, works hard each day to help keep the school clean. She goes above and beyond in her duties as a custodian, but her value goes far beyond just the worth of her custodial duties. Maria goes out of her way to help anyone in any way that she can. She eagerly helped the kindergarten team last year as it prepared for the winter celebrations in Mexico event. Maria is a true treasure to the Bethel family. Ms. Maria is a custodian, a teacher, a presenter, a teacher assistant, a gardener, a cook, a translator, and a friend, just to name a few of the many roles she has at the school. Ms. Maria was a guest presenter for second grade classes about Christmas in Mexico. She bought an authentic pinata for students and helped them cook and create a table display to teach their parents about what they had learned. She taught kindergarten students about Sanco de Mayo. She also helped out in first grade by teaching the students about the Day of the Dead. When the first graders planted a garden outside, Ms. Maria was right there beside them to help them plant their seeds. She watered the seeds for them over spring break. Later in the spring, she helped these same students to harvest their vegetables. As fourth grade learned about the different regions of North Carolina, Ms. Maria helped students by cooking foods from those regions as well. Ms. Maria goes above and beyond and always gives 110%. After she finishes her own duties, she goes to the classrooms to see if the teachers need her to do anything for them, like cutting or sorting papers. When a teacher needed a translator for a parent, Ms. Maria came back to the school after work and translated for her. She has translated for nearly every teacher in the school and always does so graciously. She is truly dedicated. Ms. Maria loves the staff and the students, and they love her. She makes Bethel a wonderful place to work, visit, and learn. Ms. Maria is the heart of Bethel Elementary School. Thank you for making an Impact Through Education. Now, we will begin our recognitions for students and staff at Hickory Ridge High School. I'd like to invite any members of the Hickory Ridge High School administrative team to please come forward at this time. Our first honoree from Hickory Ridge High School is Patrick Carmen. Would Patrick and his family please come forward? Patrick is a senior at Hickory Ridge High School. He is described as a people person with a phenomenal personality. In addition to being involved in student council, Young Democrats, and National Honor Society, Patrick also served as a junior marshal and is an AP scholar. Patrick plans numerous events for the leadership class. Two of the major events he organizes during the fall semester are homecoming and the school's canned food drive. He goes above and beyond what is asked of him. Patrick plans to attend George Washington University or UNC Chapel Hill and major in math. Congratulations, Patrick. Our next honoree is Madison Hightower. Would Madison and her family please come forward? Madison is also a senior at Hickory Ridge High School. She is described as a ray of sunshine in the halls of Hickory Ridge. Madison is involved in many school clubs, including key club, student council, and Beta Club. She's also a member of Girl Scouts. Madison was instrumental in starting the middle school mentoring program at Hickory Ridge last year and continues to ensure its and the students' success. She also was one of the leaders for the eighth grade transition day the school hosted. Without her positive energy, the day would not have been as successful as it was. Madison also volunteered during the summer to work with at-risk, rising ninth graders as they spent a day learning the ins and outs of high school. Madison doesn't expect anything in return for all of her efforts. She does it because she wants to make a difference at Hickory Ridge. Madison plans to attend North Carolina State University to study environmental science. Congratulations, Madison. Our next honoree is Mrs. Sandy Stroll. Would Mrs. Stroll and her family please come forward? In addition to being wife to Ron, mother to Chris, and grandmother to Hattie, Mrs. Stroll is in her seventh year as a biology teacher at Hickory Ridge High School. She was part of the leadership team that helped to open Hickory Ridge. Mrs. Stroll has served as lead mentor, science department chair, and sponsor of the National Beta Club since Hickory Ridge opened. She also participates in team and training events which raises awareness and money for the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society. Mrs. Stroll's leadership and hard work continue to have an impact on the success of Hickory Ridge High School. We thank you for all that you do for Hickory Ridge High School and are pleased to present you with this Impact Through Education Award. And our final honoree this evening from Hickory Ridge High School is Ms. Kim Waddington. Would Ms. Waddington and her family please come forward? Kim Waddington has been the treasurer at Hickory Ridge High School for four years. She and her husband Bill are proud parents of Robert and Emily. Mrs. Waddington was active in the startup of the Bible teaching programs at both Hickory Ridge High School and J.M. Robinson High School. In addition to doing an excellent job at managing the school's financial needs, Mrs. Waddington is very supportive of the school's athletic programs and its students. She is a tremendous asset to Hickory Ridge. Mrs. Waddington, thank you for your support of Hickory Ridge High School. We are thrilled to present you with this Impact Through Education Award.
That's always a fun part of the meetings, is when we get to do these recognitions. I always enjoy to see the Impact Through Education, especially because this is an award that will last a long time for these youngsters, and so we appreciate it. Our next item on the agenda is the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month Award. I have Dr. Barry Ambish coming to the podium and Dr. Barry Shepherd to make this presentation.
We are sorry that Mr. Vaughn from Hillbush Ford is not able to be with us tonight, but as always, we do want to offer our thanks to him and to Hillbush Ford for honoring an outstanding teacher in our district. This month, our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month is Miriam Kirkendall. Mrs. Kirkendall, would you and your family and any members of your school's administration Miriam Kirkendall is the theater arts teacher and fine arts department chair at Cox Mill High School. She was nominated for this award by eight students and four parents. And although winners are not selected based on the number of nominations they received, the comments written by the parents and the students were so moving that her selection certainly seemed inevitable. One student wrote, "Ms. Kirkendall deserves this award because she does so much for our wonderful theater department. She chooses a play, casts the actors, stays after school every day to run the show, and shows her actors her vision. She designs the set and finds costumes for the actors, and on top of all that, she teaches seven amazing theater classes every year. She is the best teacher I've ever had." Other students wrote about her, "She's taught me so much, not only about school, but about life, and she's inspired me in so many areas in my life. She forms bonds with her students and is always comforting, but she's not afraid to push us to work to our potential, and she knows we have more potential than we think." Parents are equally smitten with Mrs. Kirkendall and sing her praises as well. In their nominations, a couple of them wrote, "Mrs. Kirkendall has helped my daughter to be outgoing and unafraid. I couldn't ask for a more helpful teacher." Another wrote, "She's helped my daughter get closer to her dream of being a Broadway star." Mrs. Kirkendall, on behalf of Cabarrus County Schools, thank you for all that you do to teach, inspire, and encourage your students. We appreciate your commitment, and we are honored to have you as a part of the Cabarrus County Schools family. Now, Dr. Shepherd, would you make the presentation, please? Now, Dr. Shepherd, would you make the presentation, please?
Our next award tonight will also be presented by Dr. Marion Bish and Dr. Barry Shepherd as the Cabarrus County Schools' Principal of the Year.
Mr. Shue and members of the board and Dr. Shepherd, it is truly my honor to introduce the Cabarrus County Schools' Principal of the Year for 2013 and 14. I'd like to ask Dr. Keisha Khan and her family to come forward. Our Cabarrus County Schools' Principal of the Year for 2013-14 is Dr. Keisha Khan, Principal of JM Free's Magnet School. Dr. Khan holds a PhD in Curriculum and Instruction, a Master's of Education in School Administration, and a Bachelor's Degree in Middle Grade Science and Math, all from the University of North Carolina at Charlotte. Dr. Khan has been the principal of JM Free since 2006, when it was a traditional middle school, and she remained principal when the school became a magnet for IB and STEM middle school students. Prior to that, she was an Assistant Principal of Instruction at Northwest Cabarrus Middle School and a classroom teacher at Concord Middle School. We are very proud to claim Dr. Khan as a graduate of Cabarrus County Schools, as she has lived here throughout her youth. Dr. Khan was selected by an interview team composed of past Principals of the Year who indicated that Keisha represents the best of the best: dedication to her craft, a passion for her students' success, attention to detail, faculty and staff support, and communication with her community. She promotes her school to others, uses data for continual school improvement (more about that in a second) and does an outstanding job of using PLCs to improve learning for the students and teachers in her school. About that data, in addition, on October 1st, Keisha and this district was informed that she had been selected for the very first cohort of distinguished leadership in practice for digital learning. The program will be a rigorous experience designed to equip participants to apply school leadership practices that are most associated with successful digital transformation. This is a cutting-edge digital leadership program designed to provide skills to create highly personalized and flexible schools capable of optimizing digital resources and graduating all of its students college and career-ready. We are truly honored and proud to have Keisha as a member of the inaugural cohort of this group. Thank you, Keisha, for your dedication to Cabarrus County Schools and the children of our community. We've been together since she was a teacher, and we are all proud to have you represent this school system as Principal of the Year.
Thank you once again, Keisha. You are a well-deserved candidate, and we appreciate you being our 2013-2014 Teacher of the Year. The next item on the agenda tonight is the 2013 North Carolina Danny Hardy Career Technical Education Administrator of the Year, and here tonight to present that is Dr. Jason Van Heuclum.
Thank you, Mr. Shue. At this time, if Lisa Conger would join Dr. Shepherd at the front? Very proud tonight to recognize Ms. Lisa Conger. Ms. Lisa Conger is the CCS Director of Career and Technical Education, and she was named recently the 2013 North Carolina CTE Director of the Year, which recognizes a CTE director who is a leader and an innovator and has a passion for career and technical education. Ms. Conger has been the CTE Director for Cabarrus County Schools since 2007. During her tenure, she has led the implementation of several of the district's most successful and popular CTE programs, including the FIRE Academy at Concord High School, the Culinary Arts Program at Hickory Ridge High School, and the Robotics Program at JM Robinson High School. Currently, Ms. Conger is involved in creating the new Advanced Manufacturing Program for our district, as well as a new Biotech Academy at Northwest Cabarrus High School. Ms. Conger was named the Regional CTE Director of the Year in the spring and then went on to compete against colleagues from five other regions in North Carolina. Regional winners submitted a digital portfolio and interviewed with a selection committee before a final selection was made. I want to congratulate Lisa in this very high honor. Congratulations.
Congratulations again, Lisa, for your accomplishments there, and the programs that Dr. Van Heuclum mentioned there, the CTE programs, are just another example of what makes Cabarrus County Schools the clear choice when it comes to educating children, and we appreciate it so much. The last award that we have tonight is the Special Olympics North Carolina Coordinator of the Year Award, and we got Ms. Donna Smith here for that.
I'd like to introduce to you Emily Riley. Emily is holding the plaque that she's already received, and I'd like to describe that a bit. If you look at it, you can easily tell it involves the Olympics because we have the silver, the gold, and the bronze. I didn't put that in the right order, did I? But that's the way Special Olympics is all about. I am so pleased to introduce to you Emily Riley, who is our Cabarrus County Special Olympics Coordinator. Emily was named the 2013 Special Olympics North Carolina Coordinator of the Year during North Carolina's Leadership Conference that was held in Statesville. This honor is in recognition of all the leadership that she's brought to Special Olympics in Cabarrus County. Special Olympics provides year-round sports, training, and athletic competition in a variety of Olympic-type sports for children and adults with intellectual disabilities, giving them continuing opportunities to develop physical fitness, demonstrate courage, experience joy, and participate in the sharing of gifts, skills, and friendships with other athletes and the community. Keith Fishburne, who is the President and CEO of Special Olympics North Carolina, says, "Emily's enthusiasm and passion for Special Olympics has taken the Cabarrus County program to the next level. I know her dedication to the athletes is second to none, and the program will continue to grow and lives will be impacted for the better because of her leadership." You only have to speak to Emily less than a minute before she's telling you all about Special Olympics. She seldom speaks about herself, but she began this role in 2010, and prior to joining Special Olympics, she taught special education, and she also worked for Make-A-Wish Foundation, so she brought many skills into this leadership role. Under her guidance, three sports have been added. We now roller skate. We have alpine skiing. We have flag football, and she has worked hard with the Young Athletes Program. And I would be very wrong if I did not tell you what Special Olympics does in Cabarrus County, because Emily reminds me of this very frequently, because many people think of Special Olympics as only spring games. And she would quickly tell me to tell you to mark your calendars for April the 8th and April the 9th, 2014, because she plans that far ahead, and that's when our athletes will be performing. But that's only one aspect of the program. There is a sports program that's offering 16 sports across three seasons: fall, winter, and spring, and she also works hard with the Young Athletes Program, which is designed for individuals ages 3 to 7 years of age, and many people are unfamiliar with that program. These athletes are taught fine and gross motor skills to prepare them for sports, and we see this program in operation at Mirre Francis Wall Center, Long Preschool, and McKnight Child Development Center. I am so proud of Emily and her accomplishments. Her sincerity, her commitment, and the passion to the student-athletes of Cabarrus County makes Special Olympics very successful here and is recognized by the state. We salute Emily.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move on with the agenda tonight, and the next item is the approval of the minutes of prior meetings. We have the minutes before you are the September the 9th, 2013 Work Session and the September the 16th, 2013 Business Meeting. Do I have a motion that the minutes be approved as presented, or do you have changes or anything that we need to talk about?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The only thing I saw was on the, what was it, this, the September 14th meeting, the proposal by Ryan Holmes to obtain a new-
You're talking about September 16th?
Yeah, September 16th.
Okay.
Proposal by Ryan Holmes. It mentions in there that they are going to construct an emergency access road, but it says that the motion was made that they would only have to give us the payment of $3,188, but I think we also included in there that they would make the payment and provide the emergency access road.
Yeah, I think you're right. I didn't catch that. What page are you on?
Let's, I gotta look. Five of seven, down near the bottom of page five. So it would be that final paragraph where it says, "A motion was made by Barry Shoemaker, segmented by Rob Walter, that the request for permanent sewer easement for Ryan Holmes to connect to the City of Concord sewer line located on Patriots Elementary School property be approved as presented for a payment to CCS of $3,188," and I would just add, "and the construction of an emergency access road between Patriots Elementary and CC Griffin" as it's stated in the first paragraph.
Absolutely, and I thank you, Mr. Phelps, for catching that. I read it, but how in the world I missed it, I don't know, but anyway, I guess it shows I'm human. All right, well, are there any other changes for the September the 9th or the 16th minutes? All right, now, do I have a motion that the minutes be approved with the noted corrections for September the 16th and the, I mean, yeah, and the September the 9th be as presented?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Shoemaker makes the motion?
Second.
Mr. Kyger seconds it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed? Okay, motion carries 6-0. I got it right this time, Carolyn. 6-0. Mr. Harrison, as you notice, is not with us tonight, for whatever reason. I think he's, might be out of town. Okay, the next item here is the Board Chair Comments, and I don't really have a lot to say tonight, but one thing that I do want to say is this: As we are in the preparations for trying to get a bond referendum, potentially get a bond referendum put together for 2014 to hopefully meet some of the needs of Cabarrus County Schools, I'd like to invite the viewing audience and the ones that's with us tonight to sort of keep in mind, you know, the needs of the school system, and in the event that a bond referendum is put on the ballot, to keep that in mind at some point in the future. We've been in the talks with the County Commission a couple of times now, and not only our needs have been presented, but those of Kannaple City Schools, as well as Roan Community College, and then Cabarrus County also has a need list that they would like to try to see get put together at some point. But it's not going to be an easy task. It's not going to happen overnight, and it's going to take everyone's commitment to education to see to it that we can continually move forward as we have in the past and not reach a stalemate, and get no telling how long it might be before we can move forward with these projects, if for whatever reason we don't have the support of the commission. So I'd like to just invite everyone to, you know, to sort of talk this up in the community, talk it up with your friends, your relatives, your neighbors, and just let them know that the schools are trying to do what needs to be done and what's right for children. And so with that being said, I'd like to ask Dr. Shepherd, he has his comments ready, and then we'll move the meeting forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things I'd like to remind you of tonight. First, I'd like to remind our parents that this coming Friday, October 18th, we'll have an early dismissal day for students, and then on Monday, we'll be out of school for a teacher work day. So students will be dismissed early on Friday and then no school for students on Monday. I'd also like to make our parents aware that we've moved this date for our report cards back a couple of days to allow for some scheduled updates to our new software program that generates the report card. So students will now receive their first quarter report cards on October the 30th. Looking ahead, we expect also the State Board of Education to release end-of-grade and end-of-test, end-of-course test results for the 2012-2013 school year in November. Now, this is several months past when these grades are normally released. We told you last year that students were going to be required to meet a higher standard of proficiency on these tests. Now, in the past, proficiency standards only addressed what students needed for success at the next grade level. The new proficiency standards address how ready students are for college and career, and whether the students are on track to be ready by high school graduation. Now, whenever new standards are set, test scores, results indicate a drop at first. This usually is the trend. Now, early indications are that these drops in proficiencies this year will be significant. I want to assure you, though, that the lower proficiency scores do not mean that our students grew less academically last year. The tougher achievement standards will show fewer students meeting these proficiency standards initially, which is to be expected since we're challenging students to reach higher levels of learning than ever before. We'll share more about the high standards and the expected drop in proficiencies in our coming weeks. Also, our annual United Way Employee Giving Campaign began last week and continues through November the 4th. Our employees are strong supporters of United Way, donating more than $30,000 last year. Our local Cabarrus County United Way provides financial support to 24 agencies that provide a variety of needed health and human services. A donation to United Way truly is a donation to helping our friends, our neighbors, altogether our community. our community. Last, but certainly not least, tonight, we offer thanks to Dollar General and Unilever for their efforts to promote reading at the elementary level with their annual Reading Puts You on the Track to Victory program. Ten of our elementary schools recently completed the three-week program that encourages students to read for pleasure outside their classrooms, and offers them prizes for achieving specific reading milestones. I'm pleased to report that our students read nearly 1.2 million minutes. And last week, we received a $25,000 grant from Unilever to be shared equally among the 10 participating schools. Since 2010, Unilever and Dollar General have donated $100,000 to our school district, and we are most thankful for their support and generosity. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. I am so glad that you wrote that out about Dollar General in particular, because I was reading that, and I, they need recognition for four years of participation, and so thank you for doing that. Okay, the next item is 8.1, guest speakers, and we have one guest speaker tonight, and that would be Ms. Gabriella Agnello from Girl Scout Troop 255. And so if you'll come to the podium, and you can talk to us, and you've got three minutes to address the board any way you feel. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, my name's Gabriella Agnello. I'm a junior at Coxwell High School, and I'm in Girl Scout Troop 255, and I'm currently working on my gold project. For those of you who don't know, the girl, the gold award is the highest honor a Girl Scout can achieve. It takes 80 hours, and it's a girl-led project, which means you need to be ahead of a team, and it has to be sustainable. My gold project is to build a bike rack out in front of Harris Road Middle School, and it would only be available to students that live in Moss Creek. I would also offer a bike safety class for anyone to use the rack. I am building the rack to promote a healthy lifestyle for those students that go to Harris Road Middle School. The design for my bike rack is eight individual U-shaped racks that can hold about 16 bikes. The rack itself would be 18 feet long and 3 feet high. The approximate cost would be $668 for just the rack. I decided to use a design that embeds the rack into, into the ground for more stability. By installation, I would use concrete to embed them in the ground and put flowers around the rack for decoration, and I would have the Coxwell High School Beta Club to aid me in decorating the racks. The students must take a bike safety class in order to use the racks, and the class would be offered through the Concord Police Department or a video made by our, the Coxwell High School Drama Club. The project should cost about $900. Donations from Walmart, Lowe's, and Home Depot for the flower, soil, concrete, et cetera. Donations from the Harris Road Middle School PTSO, and for the, from the board for racks. And for the funds I have left, I would do fundraising through ideas like a bake sale and a car wash. Are there any questions?
Okay, Gabriella, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
And we'll take this under advisement.
Thank you.
Okay, good night. Okay, board members, we need to move right along. While I'm looking up here where I'm supposed to be, it's always nice to have guest speakers, and we once again thank you for being here.
Yeah, I wanted to point out, it is nice to have guest speakers that for once aren't telling us everything we're doing wrong. So, thank you very much for coming.
Absolutely. Yeah, okay, good night, folks. All right, the next item is the approval of the consent agenda. And board members, this is the items that we discussed quite lengthy last week when we had our work session. And so do I have a motion that the consent agenda be approved as it is presented?
Second.
Ms. Carpenter makes the motion?
Second.
Mr. Walter seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries six zero. All right, now, we'll move into the action portion of our meeting tonight, and I'd like to ask Dr. Chris Lauder to come to the podium. He's going to talk with us about the policy number 5030, community, uh, community use of facilities. And as you know, this is a policy that we've discussed, and we've beat around the bush for probably about a year now. And so we need to come to some kind of a consensus tonight on what we're going to do. So, Dr. Lauder, I'll turn the podium over to you, and then you can tell us whatever you hadn't already told us, and let the board decide what you want to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. As, as Mr. Schu stated, this is the policy that's been around for a while. We discussed that a little so tonight. Mr. Harrison is not here. He's one of the representatives on our policy committee. Ms. Carpenter is the other. It is the recommendation of the policy committee to recommend that you guys pass this. Ms. Carpenter may be able to answer some questions, and Ms. Stone, as attorney, may be. So at this point, I'll just say, if you guys have any questions, we'll try to answer it. It is our recommendation to move forward with passing the policy.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Lauder. And since Ms. Carpenter is on our policy committee, I'd like to ask her, if you will, to kick off another round of discussion on this, and then we'll give each board member opportunity to time to say whatever they have to say, and then we'll call for a vote. Ms. Carpenter?
Well, as I mentioned before at our work session, our, our committee went through this over and over. As was mentioned before, our board asked for it to be put back to our committee, because some of the committee members had a real problem with the 50% discount that we were giving the youth organizations. They thought that was too, too much to give to the youth organizations, because we were, there was some concern on that, that that was too much. And this was, uh, this 50% was recommended to us by the, the actual schools. They were encouraging that. They wanted to encourage the, you know, the, to, to encourage the, the youth to use it. And that they, they felt that there were some organizations that had not been, been charged, that were going to be charged, and that in the past, they had not been charged anything, and they needed that discount. And we wanted to encourage the youth to, to use it. And so this was going to help them do that. And so we, we worked on the chalkboard what this would mean, and some people said, "Well, what about these tournaments?" Well, the tournaments are completely different. There's a tournament charge, and so that was not going to affect them. So with that in consideration, because then we looked at, "Well, what about just charging 25%? Just use that 25% discount, just using that?" Well, that didn't work either. And our principals, and again, we do have principals from all different levels on our, on our policy committee, at the elementary, middle school, and high school. They really wanted to keep that 50% discount level. Again, this is something that we need to go ahead and get in place. And Kelly said that, looking at this fee schedule, she was comfortable with us being able to recoup, you know, what our actual fees are. She was comfortable with this at, now, she can shake her head, that she's comfortable with this right now, that we are recouping what we need to be recouping, uh, you know, to cover our fees. I mean, what it's costing us right now with this 50%. So that made us feel comfortable, our committee. So right now, I'm comfortable with what we've got. If we do need to change it later on, we can always do this. But we, we've got to go ahead and get something in place right now. So at this point, may not be perfect, but we've got to get something in place. So I'm willing to go ahead and do this right now. You know, I'm always one that, yeah, I don't like to give something away unless I have to, but at this point, I think we need to move with it.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Very well spoken. I'd like to open it up for board comment at this point. I will say that, just a more or less a ditto of what Ms. Carpenter has already said, I feel very comfortable that if Ms. Klutz says that she's going to cover our costs, then I feel sure she will. So I'm at rest with that. And then also keep in mind, you know, the county has encouraged, not only the school system, but, you know, they've encouraged us to make our facilities more available to the community, and we do want to do that. And we have to have a strong policy, because we have all types of situations and all types of groups wanting to use our facilities. So we have to have the rules, the guidelines, and all that stuff set down in stone. And so with that being said, I'd like to start on my right, Mr. Shoemaker, and if you have any comments that you would like to add to this, then we're going to move on.
Uh, I'm just saying-
Don't forget to key up, please.
I've read through it, and I understand some of the misgivings around youth organizations, but I believe that they've done due diligence, that a lot of due diligence has been done in this, and I support this the way it is.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Mr. Keiger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's no sense in beating this up too bad, that, I guess the key for me and Ms. Carpenter said, that we have principal representation on the committee, and that they, they like what they've seen and what we have, and, 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 boy, we're going to put a lot on Kelly, but if Kelly's telling us, it's okay. I'm inclined to think that, that, that we're covered and we're, and we're fine. You know, the, we did, I did want to read and make sure I wasn't missing anything as far as the county and Parks and Rec, and all of that's covered here. And then there's, so we, we've got a lot of different groups and a lot of different people trying to use the facilities, and I think we're trying to do the best we can and walk that line into making it as broadly-based available as we can. And that's really, has been a specific charge from our commissioners to us, and I think we've done a good job of doing that, and this, to me at least, addresses that.
You're right. And as, as Mr. Keiger, he's our Parks and Rec representative, so he knows a lot about that as well. So we thank you, Mr. Keiger, for your comments. Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I've kind of got the opposite, opposite point of view. I still have a lot of trouble with this policy. I think the big hang-up I have, and it is improved, and I do appreciate the work that's been done to improve it, but the big hang-up I have is essentially, this is an increase in fees to the folks who are using our schools now. And we don't have the approval of that. We have, we approve stuff, you know, graduation fees, we approve all this other, but we're not approving these fees, and this is impacting the community. So I think we ought to have the, at least come before us and approve the fees on an annual basis, if that's what that is. So I'd like to see that changed before I can support anything. But on the other, other part of it, I think it's a fairly confusing document. I, I don't think it's very easy for the public to understand it, but I guess that's really kind of where I, where I'm at. I, I think we can, we can do a better job of trying to explain these different categories to folks, and, and, you know, is my organization included? Is it not? If I'm, I, I just don't think it, it conveys that we want more people to use, reuse the, use our facilities. But those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. And also, Mr. Phillips?
Yes, I, as I said last week, I'm, I'm concerned about this, particularly because I don't feel that we have enough funds already to maintain the facilities that we do have at the level of use that they're given, and if we're now going to offer discounts to not just nonprofit youth organizations, but for-profit youth organizations, that just strikes me as wrong. And I would think that at least if we're going to give for-profit organizations a 50% discount, we should also require them to volunteer in some aspect in helping to maintain the facilities that they're going to use. Otherwise, it just seems to me that it's, uh, we're, we're using our tax-exempt status to give a, um, a benefit to a tax-paying entity, and I don't think that's right. So I guess that's, that's my say. It sounds like most of the, the board is in favor of this, so the only thing I would do is, is to offer an amendment that we reinsert nonprofit in front of youth organizations on the bottom of, what is that, page two in Section D? Looks like it was originally nonprofit youth organizations, and then the nonprofit was struck through in the latest revision. So I would just put that out there and see if there might be a second.
Okay. I'm sorry, I, I should have been paying better attention, Mr. Phillips. But Dr. Shepherd wants to make a comment.
I'd just like to ask, when the committee discussed this, what was the reason that we, that we're recommending not to add that?
I would say, and that the, the principals were really the driving force behind that, to ultimately say, when students are, are involved with these activities, even some of the ones that are for-profit, they're ultimately serving our students. And so kids are, are involved with things two hours after school gets over with, that yes, it may be a small business, but at the end of the day, 90% of the kids are our students, and they're supplementing what we do there. So they felt very strongly, and, and really kind of led the charge to say, can we not, we want these people to, to be using our school and serving our students, even when sometimes they're there, can we, can we change that? And again, the committee spent quite a bit of time with that. The attorney reviewing that too, and at the, at the end of that discussion said, "We, we want to encourage this."
The small groups wouldn't have that designation?
Yeah. She also said the, the really small groups would not necessarily have that designation, I guess, and that was something that, that a lot of people spend a lot of time on. In other words, a, um, the best example, I think, is an AAU baseball team with 10 eight-year-olds on it, 10 eight-year-old boys. They ultimately may be in that scenario, and that kind of scenario is what we were talking about. We want to not make it really difficult to charge a lot of money for, for somebody to bring 10 eight-years, 10 eight-year-olds out on the baseball field. We think that's good for the community, and it ultimately helps our schools.
Thank you, Dr. Lauder. I appreciate the hard work on this, and, you know, you guys can only imagine that if we spent as much time on every policy as we have this one, we would never get anything done. And I'll tell you, I don't think that there's no such thing as a perfect policy. And just because we vote on this, and this policy is implemented, and it's actually approved, if it is approved by the board, doesn't mean that if we find somewhere down the line, that if somebody is, or some groups are circumventing the policy, there's always somebody out there smarter than us. So that's why we have to go back and revise, and revise, and keep revising for that very reason. But in the event that does happen, it can always be brought back before the board, and it can spend another year in policy. So I hope that's not the case. But anyway, board members, are there any other further comments on policy number 5030, community use in facilities?
Is it too difficult to add on the fee section here that we approve those fees?
Well, I don't think that, I don't, I wouldn't support that at this time. I've got enough confidence in Ms. Klutz that she'll handle that. Only thing that I would ask is, Ms. Klutz, that you see to it we get a report as the, if the fees stay the same, there's no need. You just give us a real quick ditto, you know, in the report section or something of a Friday report annually. Let us know that, you know, the, the costs have maintained, therefore, we can maintain our costs. But I, I would honestly expect, though, that if we do have increases, Duke Power, whatever increases, that I would, would certainly appreciate that that be taken in consideration annually.
Sure. I'm happy to report any changes to you, but the, the fee structure, the, the list stays on our website at all times, so you would have it available to you at any time. But if, I would certainly apprise you of any changes prior to that happening.
Okay, all right. I would appreciate that. Thank you, Ms. Klutz. Okay, with that being said, do I have a motion that policy 5030, community use of facilities, on the second reading be approved as presented?
I'd make a motion that we approve it.
Okay, Ms. Carpenter makes the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Keiger seconds it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, any opposed?
No.
Okay, so it looks like the motion still carries four to two, with Mr. Phillips and Mr. Walter dissenting. And thank you, Ms. Monroe, for getting that recorded.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question before?
Absolutely.
Um, what would be the possibility, when we do the fees at the beginning of the year or in summertime, that these fees associated with, with, with this particular policy, that they get included in that listing, so that we improve all fees in one big, big swoop? Now, I know you said that you keep it up on the website, so that those who want to rent from us, or rent, rent space from us during the year have access to it, but this way, we would know what the fees are, and it would be a, you know, public record for us. And that's a little bit of a different departure, but I don't know how we would elevate that so that we could entertain what Mr. Walter says, because I see benefit in what he's saying, is that, you know, that way the board is aware of what's going on, and, you know, you know, a one-time-a-year type thing, and that way we, you know, because we do publish all of our fees, and that would be one of them.
Ms. Klutz, is that something that you can handle, or are we being redundant on?
Sarah, do you want to address, we don't, everything that we charge is not necessarily a fee, and those are not handled in the same way. And I'm not sure that, is this, is this the same type of fee?
I know the board annually approves student fees, the fees that go to the students.
That's what he's talking about.
And special books, and caps and gowns, and so forth, and this is a, I would claim, I would argue this is a different type of fee, because this is something that would be paid by outside groups to the school. But it certainly- by outside groups to the school. But it certainly is up to the board as to whether or not they'd like to see it either reported to them or presented for their approval on some regular basis.
Well, the point being is, yes, it's not a student fee, but you could say other miscellaneous fees, 'cause there's not too many more after we get past these fees for rentals.
I would prefer just to report them to you, just to give you the list as it's updated. I think that would be a better structure. I would not want to attach it to the student fee, the graduation fees, all those things. And at the end of the day, you're getting the same thing, right?
Well, then, could you do it at the same time? So we would have, that way, we're in fee-looking mode. And then we just-
Well, we don't get pay raises at the same time that we get fee structure, student, we don't get utility raises. It's not, doesn't necessarily come at the same time.
Right. So you're saying you calculate- You calculate these fees after school begins?
On an as-needed basis. So we haven't got pay increases for four or five years, so we haven't necessarily needed. It depends on all of those factors.
Okay.
So, it would be as needed, not on a July-to-July basis.
Okay. I'll yield to Mr. Walter.
Ultimately, we're responsible for those fees. If a community member has an issue with what they're charged, if they come in next week or when this thing comes implemented, and their fees are three times, or, you know, it's not that much, but if it's twice what they were paying before, they're coming back to the board here. And I think we ought to at least have a say, you know, at least approve them. I understand we need to make our, we need to get our costs back. That makes every sense in the world. But as far as the board here, we ought to at least be able to approve. Or no. And we ought to at least get a report that we can say yes or no to, or go back and try to figure it out.
And didn't we say that if I report them to you, that that was adequate?
In my opinion, I think we need to say approved, like we do a student fee.
Okay. So you'll approve them? And, so you're telling me to approve them in July?
It doesn't matter what time they come before me. If you're gonna change them, have us approve them. But-
So you're telling me-
Mr. Chairman, I think we've gotten off track.
Yeah, we have.
This really isn't on our agenda.
Absolutely.
If we need to bring it up sometime at a later date, then if it's the pleasure of the board, then that's what we need to do. It sounds like we've given, I mean, she's given us what she's going to do going forward. The policy is passed, and if we need to have that discussion, that's a separate discussion on a different day.
Thank you, Mr. Keiger. And I'd like to also remind the board, you know, that it's not our job to micromanage any department, you know, facilities, finance, or anything, you know. It's our job to govern and try to do it well. And I think that Ms. Klutz, you know, as sharp as she is, as being our chief financial officer for the number of years, and then being our assistant financial officer for many, many years prior to that, that she is more than capable, more than competent in taking care of this. And I can promise you, as I said earlier, if there is a reason for a red flag, it won't be us, it will be her bringing it to us.
Thank you.
And so, you know, it has been the pleasure of the board that this policy be approved as it is presented. And that's the way it'll stay until the policy committee gets word that they need to look at it again. And then, as I said earlier, if that's the case, then we'll look at it again at some point in the future. But for right now, it's good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Klutz. Thank you, board members, for your input. All right, our next item here is the approval of the board meeting calendar revisions. You remember, we talked about this last week, and this was brought to my attention by several of the board members, that the cost associated with having on-the-road meetings was more than we wanted to spend. And so therefore, we were asked to look at, revisit this particular board item again and consider removing the on-the-road meetings that have been scheduled already for the 2013-14 school year. And I think that there were three more meetings that have been scheduled. And anyway, I think that we need to open this up once again, 'cause there was a call last week when we discussed it, that it would go to the action agenda. And that's where it is now. And so I'd like to open it up for further board discussion. And then we'll move right on into a vote on this particular revision. And with that being said, I'd like to start on Mr. Phillips' side, get your comments and your recommendations and so forth, and we'll come on down the board.
Unfortunately, I missed this part of the discussion last week, but I certainly am sympathetic to wanting to control costs. And I think if we'd known ahead of time how much it was going to cost to have these remote-location meetings, that we would, I would not have supported it originally. So, I support the proposed revision in the calendar. And I would just say that I, it would, one thing we may want to consider is having some kind of a formal effort to have board member outreach to the individual schools that, when they, for instance, when they have a parent-teacher organization meeting, perhaps one of us could go so that there is some outreach and availability to get feedback from parents back to the board from the various schools.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. And one thing that I might add, you know, because I think that was mentioned by another board member last week, was that, you know, the schools need to feel like they have representation from a board member. And it might be, just like we have, the board chair each year makes appointments to all the different municipalities and local other entities where we have liaisons and people that we send to, like the Metroline of Planning Organization, Ms. Carpenter's on, the Midland Town Council, the Harrisburg Town Council. It's like 24 or 25 different areas that the board members divide up. And it might be that we could take the schools and divide them up amongst the board members. That would be something for the board to be thinking about at some time in the future. And then whoever the next board chair is could be thinking about that. We got 40 schools. You divide it up by seven board members, and each board member is responsible for that many schools to be their liaison in the event that something needs to be brought back to the board. So that's just some food for thought and to keep in mind for some time in the near future. But let's move on with the conversation. And, Mr. Walter, I'd like to ask you to speak to this.
Again, it's the opposing point of view. I think clearly that there's a value to having our meetings out at these locations. And I'm not convinced that the costs are that high above having the meetings here at the Ed Center. And what I keep hearing is it's cost, cost, cost issues. And I want to thank Dr. Probst for giving us a report on what those costs were. Can I ask a couple of questions? Is that something? You gave us, she, you gave us a spreadsheet that kinda showed exactly what the costs were for this last meeting.
Correct.
And I, can you explain what the WASPs? Because on here, we have an $1,100 cost for that.
Right. The wireless access points. The question was, how much did it cost for that evening? And we actually had to install three additional WAPs, or wireless access points. One, we actually took from another location in the school where a class was not present during that time. So, that was a freebie. We installed it and then put it back. And the others, the two, we had to get to cover the auditorium. The question was, how much did it cost for that evening? And so, they're $550 apiece.
Okay. What do they do? What do we need them for?
Your wireless connectivity. So like if-
All right. You know, I guess I was-
But we had laptops. We did not have enough ports on the stage, if you remember. We were in the, supposed to be in the media center. And if we had stayed in the media center, we probably would've hardwired you, put you, connect, directly connected to ports.
So there would've been no additional cost for-
That is correct. But when we moved to the auditorium, we had to cover that large area.
How much of this is related to having to move from the auditorium to the-
Well, that cost right there, the $1,100.
Any of this other stuff here?
Um, I'm trying to remember what was on there. No, the microphones, we'd still carry in the media center. I would say some of the labor. When we initially had the setup and we had specked out the site and the school had been working on the media center, and then when we got notice to move to the auditorium, that added to time.
So for that meeting, we had to add additional, what does it say, $150?
I would say. I don't have it right in front of me, but probably about one-third of the labor cost.
Okay. But these wireless access points, as you're saying, we purchased those now, and we can move those to other locations if that was a need?
That is correct.
So there's no additional cost now, now that those have been purchased?
That is correct. If we were to go to Mount Pleasant Middle School, and let's say that we decided to use the auditorium, then we could take those wireless access points because they're HP. If we go to C.C. Griffin, we move them to Arrow Hive, I would have to purchase additional access points for that auditorium.
But that's assuming that we're doing the same-
That's assuming that you go to the same setup.
But now that we know that, hey, it's gonna cost an additional amount, let's make our best effort to keep it in the media center where that's not necessary, 'cause we have the wireless, or we have the connectivity in the media center. Is that correct?
Yes, we have the wireless connectivity in the media center.
Okay. So, you know, I'm looking down this list, and this, the cost, to me, does not seem very excessive at all to hold them at these different locations. And, Mr. Chair, we're keeping, we've been saying that our cost is prohibitive for doing this. I think there's a benefit to going out to the schools as a board and holding the meeting, letting the public come, going out to the public instead of having the public come to us, especially in places all the way up in the northwest corner of the county or down in Harrisburg. I think the meeting that we have planned here in Mount Pleasant for next December is a wonderful opportunity for us as a board to go out and see what the issue is with Mount Pleasant. I mean, after all, we're trying to say we need a $21 million school, replacement school. Let's see, let's go out there, hear from the community on where they wanna put the school. I guess there's an issue on where it goes or where it would be. Go out there, allow us to meet with some of the parents, PTO folks, the staff, show our appreciation for what they do. And again, as a board, and there was a suggestion that Ms. Carpenter made, that, you know, maybe there's an opportunity prior to the meeting to hold like a town hall. It's not, you know, not on camera, but an opportunity for folks just to come talk to us ahead of time and just see what's going on. I think Dr. Shepherd had done something similar to that when he had come on board. I think there's benefit for the new members, certainly me, to get out to these different schools and hear what the folks are thinking, what the specific school issues are. But anyway, those are my thoughts. If we're saying it's a cost issue, I'm not seeing it here as an ongoing, every time we go out to somewhere, it's gonna cost us $2,000. What I see here is a very minimal cost to do this, now that we've done it once. And those are, right now, my comments.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Keiger?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I said pretty much everything I wanted to say about it last week. I think we need to meet here. I think it's more than cost. I think it's burden on the technology people. I think it's burden on Ms. Monroe. And it's just, I just, I don't think the benefit outweighs the financial cost plus the, for lack of a better term, manpower cost. So, I'm in support of the adjusted calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Keiger. Ms. Carpenter?
Well, as I told you before, I'm with Rob on, I think that the big cost had, we've already absorbed. And I'm with him on the Mount Pleasant thing. I think that would be very beneficial to us at this point, especially the Mount Pleasant one. If nothing else, I would say, let's keep the Mount Pleasant one, even if we have to maybe not do the other ones. But I was the one that brought up the town hall concept. And I'm not sure if you kinda understood where I was coming from with that. I was saying, if nothing else, why don't we do some town hall ones, town hall meetings at some of our schools? And what I was saying is, advertise a special meeting for the whole board to go out to some of our schools, saying, okay, our board is going to do a special meeting at J. Robinson. And advertise, we're going to go to J. Robinson one evening for an hour. And, you know, just say, we're gonna advertise, we're gonna do that. And then the members that wanted to go could go, saying, you know, all of you wouldn't have to go, but we could just advertise, we're gonna go. And then the members that wanted to go could go. And, you know, that way, we could go out like that. But we could just advertise that we're going to do that. And then the members that wanted to go could go. And then we could do it at the high schools. And that way, we could go. And that way, the staff wouldn't have to go, and there wouldn't be any cost to any of us. But we could just, and that's not anything that would be legal. We could just say we were doing it. And then it wouldn't be any cost to anybody. And then the members that wanted to go of this board could go. And the ones that didn't wanna go wouldn't have to go. Wouldn't be any cost to anybody. And that was just an idea. But we could do it at all the high schools or whatever schools we wanted to do. But, and then, like I say, it could be optional for the board members that didn't wanna go. Wouldn't be anything that would be mandatory for anybody. But it's a way we could get out. And that's something, that's just a suggestion, but we could get out in the community if we didn't want to do something like that. I'm just making a suggestion. But we could call it a town hall meeting, maybe make it an hour or two, and just a suggestion, if we don't do this. But if nothing else, I would, if we don't do the whole schedule, I would like to keep the Mount Pleasant one, if we don't do anything else. Maybe take the other ones off and keep the Mount Pleasant one on, with this schedule. It's just a suggestion.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. I got to try to keep us on track, though. We talked about town meetings last week, and that'll have to be something we'll talk about in a future date with a set item for agenda for that.
And that's a suggestion.
And I know, and I appreciate yours and Mr. Walter's point of view of getting out. And, you know, and it's like Mr. Keiger said, it's not only the cost, but the burden of everyone that's involved, you know, moving all of this equipment. And like I said, without being redundant, when we were on books and we would carry paper documents everywhere, it was really a relatively easy thing. Instead of, you know, them having to just come here for the meeting, they would go there and we'd just pick up our books and go. It wasn't nothing to it. But now that we're paperless and wireless and everything else less, it seems like, you know, that it's a lot more complicated now than it was then. And it puts a burden on a select few of people at the expense, you know, our board deciding that they wanna have the meetings out there in particular locations. And I agree with Ms. Carpenter on the Mount Pleasant. You know, we're talking about putting a bond referendum together that includes Mount Pleasant Middle School. And since it affects that community in a very large way, then I feel certain that that community has every right in the world to want to hear what we have to say. And we surely want to hear what they have to say, because they're the ones, part of the ones that put me in this seat right here and put every one of you here is the part of Mount Pleasant. So they have a say-so. And I think that we have a specific item that we would like to hear from them on. And I would say, in situations like that, I'm not opposed to having the work session there in Mount Pleasant, because we have a specific reason to be going there. But just to have a work session because we decided we wanna have one there at the expense of the taxpayer, I don't agree with it. So I would support leaving it as it is, except take the two that we have scheduled for next year off and only do the Mount Pleasant, and that would be it. That's my suggestion. And with that, Mr. Shoemaker, your comments.
Well, that's what I was going to recommend as well, is just a hybrid approach to this. I feel like Mount Pleasant is a key component of our educational philosophy, and their school is in, been on the 15-year plan for about 10 years. So, it's about time we get around to it. I think that it would be beneficial. I believe that a highly focused meeting in a school where you're really discussing something that interests the people in that school will cause them to come and participate. In our meeting at Winkler, really, we didn't see a lot of Winkler parents. It was a central group that came out, and they would've come here as well. So, we really didn't get the bang that we would like to have gotten from the local community participating. But I think in the case of Mount Pleasant, if we had a specific agenda item, and we did open it up for public comment, I think we would get a tremendous amount of participation at that forum. And that would be sometime in May where the future would be a lot clearer than what it is at this point right now, because really, we can't even have a dialogue, 'cause we're not sure what our future looks like at this point. But I would not be opposed to leaving that on our revised schedule. Right now, the schedule shows it gone, but I would like to return it back to the schedule. And I would, so if you're ready for a motion, I'd be glad to make that motion. And I'm not sure, I think the date was, get confused between these iPads.
December 2nd, I think. But a couple more comments, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'll, I'll close up. So I'll yield.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Okay, Mr. Walter.
Again, it's a community's school system, and this is an opportunity for them to come see our schools. We had, yes, we had 40 people from Central, but they got to see Winkler that normally they would not have an opportunity to see. It's an opportunity for us to highlight those schools. And again, up in the northwest area, we're going to have a new school up there. I'm sure those folks would, would like to make, have some input on that as well when that time comes next year. And then lastly, we've made, we voted on this thing, we made a commitment that we're going to hold these meetings. And I think we ought to honor our commitment. If next year comes around when we set our agenda and we don't want to include them, then we don't include them next time. But we did tell the public that we were going to hold these meetings at these schools, and I think we ought to abide by that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walter. And it's true, we did make a commitment, but at that time, as Mr. Phillips stated, we didn't realize it was going to cost us a couple thousand dollars to do that either. And so, but anyway, you know, even though some of the items that we had to make, purchase for, for that meeting, we still retain those items, and they can be used. So it's not like the entire amount was wasted. And, and there was a reason for us to move it from the media center to the auditorium, because the board members, if you remember during that period of time, the, the parents of Central Cabarrus High School were raising lots of questions about the lack of maintenance at the school and how they had gathered together. And Dr. Shepard and myself realized that the media center probably would not be sufficient to hold the number of people that we might see coming for that. And so we moved it for that reason. And when we'd done that, the costs escalated for that. Now, to say that those costs will be the same at Mount Pleasant Middle School or any of the other schools, I don't know. And I don't know that anyone really knows until we get there and we find out, you know, that we need this, we need that, we should have done this, should have done that, because I don't know anybody that carries a schematic around in their back pocket of where the school's technology is located. And so you just have to just wait and see when you get there. And with a school like Mount Pleasant Middle, as old as it is, it's probably going to be a nightmare. But the good thing is, we have made purchase of some of the, the, the equipment that we'll probably need there ahead of time. So it will save money. But, and I'm all about saving money. I've always been that way. This board has always been very prudent about spending money, because it's hard to come by these days. But, you know, I, unless there's any further discussion, we've heard from everybody numerous times, and if there's no further discussion, Mr. Shoemaker has made a motion that the calendar be revised, which would be as it is with the omission of the two that we have scheduled for next year. Is that right, Mr. Shoemaker?
Actually, yeah.
We're going, we're going to do Mount Pleasant Middle, and that's it.
That was the only, we only had two scheduled for next year.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that, those two. So we'll be taking those two's off.
So we'll just be taking one off and leaving Mount Pleasant on there, is what I was going to, that's, that was my, pardon?
We had four.
Oh, we had four, yes. Oh, we had one in December, too. Oh, okay.
So it's adding the Mount Pleasant, though?
Yeah.
On December 2nd.
Yeah, December 2nd.
So we're moving two and keeping one, which was the, when was Mount Pleasant?
It doesn't show the other two.
I'm missing, but this is what you look like all the way in.
Okay, yeah, Ms. Monroe, I guess, took them off. But anyway, it was four, two other meetings, two other schools. I think CC Griffin was one of them, and Northwest Cabarrus High School was the other.
If you go to last week's agenda, it's got the list there.
Okay. But would you restate your motion, Mr. Shoemaker?
Well, that's what I was looking for the, here it is. Should I bring the calendar up?
That one, December the 2nd, that's when you had Mount Pleasant? That's not a good time to do that.
That doesn't, I'm, I'm not in favor of adjusting this, but I'll just go ahead and give you a friendly piece of advice. That doesn't do you any good for this potential bond, to talk about it in December.
No.
So.
Well, that's why, I thought it was later. Well, my revised motion would, my motion would be that we would move the Mount Pleasant December 2nd date to May 5th, Monday, May 5th, and then we would delete the CC Griffin one and Northwest Middle School.
Mr. Shoemaker, I wouldn't agree with that, simply because I'm hoping, now, that would be contention upon what our commissioners decide, because surely we'll have a decision from our commissioners before May about a bond referendum. And if that would be the case, they'd be, it'd be a mute point to hold a work session at Mount Pleasant to discuss a potential bond referendum when it never was approved by the commission. See, it might be approved, and then again, it may not be approved as a, an item to be on the ballot for 2014. You see my, you see my point?
Now, I'll just withdraw my motion, and someone else can make a motion. Because you asked me to make a motion with Mount Pleasant on there, so I picked a date. But if you don't like that date-
What about January the 6th? I'm just saying, that December meeting, that's our first meeting in December. We really need to hold that one here.
Would you key up, Ms. Carpenter?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, we still need to discuss that, but I'm saying maybe January the 6th. But, but our first meeting in December, that really needs to be held here. That's when we do our-
Well, let me make a compromise-
Okay.
-for everyone, Ms. Carpenter. And that would be, let's just accept the revised calendar as taking all of the on-the-road meetings off of the calendar and take them all off. And then, as far as a meeting at Mount Pleasant Middle School, we'll just put that sort of on hold until we find out which way our board of commissioners goes as far as whether we're going to have a bond referendum in November 2014. At that time, we'll have something to talk about. But if they don't, if they say that, look, we're not going to authorize a bond for 2014, then there would be no reason to talk to the Mount Pleasant Middle School parents about a bond if they're not going to allow it to be on the, on the ballot. So that's what I would recommend. And, Mr. Shoemaker, I, I wasn't asking you to make a motion. You made the motion. All I was doing was to ask you to amend it, so the board would be clear on what you wanted. So now, if you have withdrawn your motion, um-
Well, withdrew it.
Because we, we were, we weren't on the same page. So my motion was very different from what you were, what you were saying, and so that was why I just withdrew it, so we could start with a clean slate.
Right. I think that's right. So let me get it clear then. So do you still want to make the motion that we approve the calendar revision as it, as it is presented, removing the, all of the on-the-road meetings? Is that what your motion would be?
My motion would be to approve the calendar as presented to us tonight's meeting. The Mount Pleasant or any other school visit would be something that we would look at and visit in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. We're on the same page now. So I have a motion. Board members, are there any, let me call for a second, may not be a second, so we may not need to go any further.
Take that in there, grab for that.
My motion is to approve the calendar as, as we have had it presented to us tonight, and that is with no other schools listed on it. It would just be a work session and a, and a, and a business meeting from here on out. Then we would schedule, we could schedule a meeting with Mount Pleasant or any other school, depending on what, what the board wishes, sometime this year, once we became clear what we might want to do, rather than being hard-pressed into, well, we would just start with a clean slate. So we would reschedule these, these outings later on this year if we needed to do one.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. Do I have a second to that motion?
I'm a little unclear on what the motion is, as far as how, how do we approve a potential doing something that's not shown on a schedule?
We're not, we're only approving the schedule.
We're just approving this, we're just approving this, this schedule.
But that's not what the motion said. I'm not trying to be argumentative, but-
Don't be.
If, if the motion is that we approve the calendar as submitted-
Yes.
-I'll give you a second.
That's, that's what the motion is, and then I was clarifying.
Then I will second that motion. If we want to discuss it at a later date, that's fine, but what we're, the business at hand is the calendar that's on tonight's agenda.
That's right. Thank you, Mr. Kiger. All right, now, I have a motion, and I have a second, that the revised calendar that's presented to us this evening be approved as presented. And I have a motion, and I have a second. Are there any further discussion before we vote?
How are we going to get Mount Pleasant?
Can we add the Mount Pleasant to that, the one date? Is that?
We can add that, well, well, it's-
You have to defeat the motion, or do you?
No, no, it's, wait a minute, let's, don't get this all wrapped up in confusion here. This is a very simple thing. We approve the revised calendar as it is presented. And then, at any time in the future, sometime when we find out what the commissioners do, we can always revisit this and do another calendar revision to include any school for any reason, if we decide to do that. But that doesn't have anything to do with what we're asking tonight. We're asking to get the revised calendar as it is presented approved. And I have a motion, and I have a second. Now, are there any other clarity issues? All in favor of this motion, say aye. Aye? Is that four on this end? Any opposed?
No.
One. Okay, the motion carries 5-1, with Mr. Walter dissenting. Okay, folks, we made it through another one, and the work, the business meeting is ready to be concluded. It's time for the board to convene into closed session, and this is, let me get to it, but these laptops sometimes a little bit slow, but we would need to convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318, 11A3, and 143-318-11A6. Do I have a motion that we convene in closed session?
So moved.
If Shoemaker makes the motion?
Second.
Mr. Walter seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, folks, that concludes our open sessions meeting tonight. I'd like to say good night to everyone. Once again, thank you for being at the Education Center, and we look forward to seeing you sometime the 1st of November. Good night to everyone.